Counsel Agenda: Township of Precipity Troy Hills, Regular Township Council Meeting of March 20, 2018.
Posting of Notice: Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Town Clerk, Township Clerk, and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building and on the municipal website on December 20, 2017, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on December 27, 2017, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers on December 20, 2017. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Public Access Channel 21 at 7:00 PM Sundays and Wednesdays, and also available for viewing at www.precipity.net.
Please rise for flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Present.
Ms. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Kariffi.
Here.
Also in attendance are Business Administrator Alan Sandman, Township Attorney Jim Lott, Township Clerk Collette Madden, Council President. We have a quorum. You may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings: April 3, 2018 at 7:30 PM, Agenda Meeting; and April 17, 2018, 7:30 PM, Regular Meeting. Approval of Minutes: Annual Reorganization Meeting, January 1, 2018. Agenda Meeting, January 2, 2018. Regular Meeting, January 23, 2018. Motion to Approve the Above Minutes made by myself.
Second, Grignani.
Motion made by Mr. Kariffi, seconded by Mrs. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, Presentation, Reports, Town Council? Anything?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing.
I have the library. I can read it here or I can read it under the committee.
Sure.
Okay, this is from the Library Committee. During the Precipity Schools' Spring Break, the week of April 1, Harry Potter-themed programs will be held for children and teens. Please check the library website for details. National Library Week will be held the week of April 8. The Precipity Library, along with the 119,487 libraries in the United States, will be celebrating National Library Week during the week of April 8 through April 14. This is the 60th anniversary of National Library Week, and the theme is "Libraries Lead." To celebrate, we are inviting our town leaders, Mayor Soriano, members of council, and the Township Department Heads to read to children during our storytimes. We will be sending out an invitation through email, so I especially encourage council members to plan to participate. On March 29 at 2:00 PM, the library will conduct a workshop on Google Photos in the library's tech lab. Participants will learn how to use Google Photos to organize, upload, manage, edit, and share photos. A flower arranging program for adults will be presented on Thursday, April 12, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM, by Cottage Flowers, a Precipity-owned and operated business. We plan to present many informational programs to inform the public while spotlighting local businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Township Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. One report and one statement. By way of report, I provided the Township Clerk with a copy of a draft ordinance concerning the conditional use standards for service stations, and that draft ordinance will be provided to council. I believe that this will be scheduled for discussion and possible introduction at the April 3 meeting. By way of statement, in response to public statements made at last week's meeting by council members DePiero and Grignadi alleging that legal counsel had misinformed them in closed session with respect to Aurora's readiness to testify at the Kariffi trial, I'm dismayed that neither of them had the courtesy to bring this matter to my attention prior to the meeting, but instead decided to raise the issue publicly. These allegations concerned matters within the attorney-client privilege that is held by the township, and they are more properly discussed in closed session, not in public session. In order to more fully discuss these matters, we will adjourn into closed session shortly.
Thank you. Business Administrator?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, Township Clerk?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, bids taken: March 1, 2018, resurface tennis courts for the Precipity Parks Department; March 15, 2018, supply and installation of new 75-foot aerial tower and platform body, or approved equivalent on Township's applied new International 7400 chassis for the Park and Forest Street Department. To be taken, March 28, 2018, road construction for Moraine Road, Phase 2, Glacier Drive, and Rate Lane; and April 5, 2018, improvements to Old Bloomfield Avenue. Quotations, proposals, qualifications, March 28, 2018. Request for proposals for clubhouse management and operation services at the Noel Country Club. Ms. Peterson?
Closed-session resolution. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss the Kariffi settlement matter, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills that the public be excluded from this meeting. Motion to adjourn into closed session by myself.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Peterson, seconded by Mrs. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi.
Recuse myself.
Okay, at this point, we will adjourn into closed session. We'll be back shortly. Thank you. Council President back on the record.
Motion to reconvene into open session.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman DePiero, seconded by Councilman Peterson.
Sorry.
Oh, Grignani.
Sorry.
Who's seconding?
Emily.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi.
Yes.
We are back into open session.
Collette, I'd like to make a motion to waive attorney-client privilege regarding the emails we just discussed in closed session.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion on the floor to, just so I could state it for the record, to waive attorney-client privilege pertaining to the emails. Motion made by Councilmember McCarthy, and it was seconded by Councilmember Peterson. So now, we're going to do a roll call. Mr. DePiero.
What's this going to do?
This is waiving the attorney-client privilege with regards to the emails discussed in closed session. So what that would do is it would release only the emails to the public if they request it through an Oprah request.
Okay. Yes.
Mrs. Grignani.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Kariffi.
Recuse myself.
Okay. So the motion passes, which means that those emails would be available to the public only through an Oprah request.
Okay, I'd like to make a statement.
Sure.
The statements made by the council members, DePiero and Grignani at last week's council meeting, were both inflammatory and, in my opinion, reckless. Calling into question the integrity of attorneys Lott and Kariffi by accusing them of misinformation is really indefensible. We all remember Aurora hired without council consent by the previous town attorney, and Aurora's $800,000 invoice. The fact that Mr. DePiero and Mrs. Grignani place so much confidence in a statement by a principal of Aurora rather than our attorneys provides more insight into the depth of their political partisanship than it does the veracity of our attorneys. I fully support the release of these documents to the public for inspection to refute the claims made by these two council members. I also call on them to apologize to Mr. Lott and Mr. Kariffi for their misguided and misleading statements. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, Grignani.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mrs. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi.
Yes.
Floor is open to the public.
Okay, if you'd like to come up and comment, please, when you come up, state your name and address, sign in. You'll be given five minutes.
Sir, sir, you drop your phone. Got to watch Mary. She takes it out of pocket.
My name is Lefty Grimes. I'm from East Hanover. I worked for Bell Labs for 21 years, and I became a sound guy there, and I became injured. I can't work there anymore because of my injury. I was on OxyContin for 10 years, Roxy Codein and Valium, and I used medical cannabis as a exit drug to get me off all those pills I was on. And now, I advocate for the sick and the dying. And the sick and the dying couldn't be here tonight because they're actually home sick and dying. There are people in wheelchairs that need help, and I make videos about wheelchair access throughout New Jersey. And I came here to Precipity because I know there's bad wheelchair access here. There's very, there's no compassion for the sick and the dying here because just walking in this front door here, hitting the blue button, didn't even work. The blue button didn't work. I mean, we went up and down the street here, and, you know, I'll ask you, sir, if you can get in a wheelchair for a day, 24 hours, and just spend the day, and go up and down the main street here, and you'll see how many businesses you can't get into. It's sad that people that are sick and dying, they need our help. They don't need more hoops to jump through in life. And this medical cannabis program that Governor Christie laid on the patients was so restrictive that people died under that program. A little girl named Sabina Rose couldn't get her medicine because of the restrictions and the stigma attached to medical cannabis. She can get Depakote, Onfe, all these horrible deadly drugs that would kill her, but cannabis, which was non-toxic, she couldn't get it. They sent her to a psychiatrist at one-year-old. What's a one-year-old going to tell a psychiatrist? But that's the regulations that Governor Christie put on these patients in New Jersey. And patients are suffering, and they need help. And right now, dispensaries can open. Once that sixth dispensary in Seaquack, it opens up, ask your city attorney this, they can open up more medical marijuana dispensaries in New Jersey. And that's what people of Morris County need. I need a dispensary in this area. I have to go an hour out of my way to go get my cannabis right now. If I wanted Fentanyl, or OxyContin, or all those horrible drugs, I can go right down the street and get them, anywhere, and kill myself. My friend Jay died last year. He called me two weeks before he died. He says, "Lefty, I'm down drugs for years, and I need to get off these pills, this heroin. I need to get off of it." I gave him the list of the doctors. I gave him all the information he needed. He didn't have the money for the doctors. He didn't have the money for the card. And it was easy for him to go down and get heroin off the street corner, and he died. My other friend, Armando, he had spine cancer, and he didn't have white privilege like that. I have white privilege. I can afford this cannabis. And I can afford the doctors. I have insurance. I can afford the cards. And every three months, I got to go back and prove that I'm sick, and I can do that. Armando didn't do that. He couldn't. He couldn't afford it. He's from the inner city. And he wound up dying because he couldn't get his medicine. And it's sad because we're doing the same thing. I'm treating my illness with cannabis. He's treating his illness with cannabis. We're doing the same thing, except I'm a customer, and he's a criminal. That's not fair. That's not American. That's not Christian. That's not right. It's wrong. And that's what I do. I go around, and I try to educate councils about this stuff, and I'm very angry, and I try not to come across as angry because I see the suffering that's going on in New Jersey. I see people suffering. Last night, we went to a town. My friend Jeff came up with his cancer. He had a chemo bag with him. He forced himself to come up to beg for his life at these councils, beg for his life, because he wants his medicine, where his wife has to drive an hour for his medicine. It's not right what they're putting patients through. If he was on OxyContin, he can get that. But no, he wants to use cannabis, something different. He has to go out of his way to get that. And people are suffering and dying. One out of 10 patients die every year. That's a stat you can't get away from. One out of 10 of us die. There's no escaping that. And I try not to be so angry because I'm trying to help these people. I'm trying to speak for them. And there's a lot more better speakers out there than me, and, you know, I'm trying my best to speak for them. And I just get very uptight and very upset because I see the suffering that's happening, that the people with cancer, people with seizures. I saw a kid in a wheelchair with a helmet on.
Sir, you have 30 seconds. Okay.
And he had to go 20 blocks to get what he needed, instead of two. How far do we want these people to go in wheelchairs to wheel themselves to get their help that they need? "They shall grow not old, as we that are left grow old. Age shall not weary them, nor the years condemn them. At the going down of the sun, and in the morning, we will remember them." We will remember them.
Hello. My name is John Keefe, Lake Precipity. And difference to him, medical marijuana, I have no issue with. I have two concerns as a longtime member of the town, and I'd like to present them both to the council. The first one is Councilman DePiero's resolution to opposition of marijuana for recreational use, not medical use. Town has a dare program. You promote it, you support it. The whole point of it is to teach children drugs are wrong. And as of now, marijuana is still an illegal drug. So how do you go and tell the kids, yes, don't do drugs, but yet you're going to try to promote recreational drugs? So with that, it comes down to money or children. The second issue I have is I did vote for Mayor Soriano. I did so because the previous administration had issues with their practice of nepotism in hiring people for jobs that they were either not qualified for, or they got the jobs strictly because of promoting that person's aspirations for political adventure. Now, I understand that the mayor wants to hire Jonathan Nelson. Okay? I read up on Jonathan Nelson. His resume includes two failed businesses, questionable education, having many judgments against him, no experience or qualifications for the job of Municipal Utility Director. Yet, so, my question is to the council and to the mayor, what makes Jonathan Nelson qualify for the job that he is getting? Is it his resume, or is it the fact that he helped somebody on their political campaign? Thank you.
You want me to?
Yeah.
On the second question with regard to personnel, we cannot discuss it at this meeting. There's an item called the Rice Act, and that individual needs to be noticed that there would be discussion on it. So this evening, we can't address it. The council can't really talk to that. Am I correct in my, I just want to have it...
That's correct, Ms. Sandman. We would have to give Rice notice.
Yeah.
Nicholas Homiak from Lake Hiawatha. If anybody's interested, you can still find it on the internet. Precipity's expert, Aurora Information Security and Risk, found liable for fraud. And there's a lot of other things in here. I'm here to present some articles in opposition to a resolution that, from its inception, was inappropriate. Councilman Lou Valori, after he lost the election, threw this marijuana thing at the council, and I felt it was particularly aimed at Paul Kariffi. It put Mr. Kariffi on the spot. Oh, Mr. Kariffi, are you for marijuana? Mr. Kariffi is a law enforcement officer. Mr. Kariffi obeys the law. Right now, marijuana's against the law, but it's a flawed law. I'd like to submit these articles that you can, URL them. They're from reliable sources that, for example, the science is clear. Marijuana is not a gateway drug. It explains it, and it's from a scientific... I don't have the organization here, but it's a scientific organization. It's in there somewhere. I don't see it here. Then, we have something from the actual Homeland Security. Marijuana is not a gateway drug. Marijuana's not a drug. Marijuana's not a drug. Stocks are up. It's a comeback from the, a throwback to the old, you know, the reefer madness, which is based on baloney. And here's the most interesting one. The more opiates doctors prescribe, the more money they make. And a lot of this, these opiates that are out on the street are prescription drugs. You turn on your TV, and they tell you what this drug will do. It'll do everything. It'll give you the craps. It'll make you see things. It might make you even drop dead. There's so many side effects, but the bottom line is just say no, but say yes to prescription drugs. And here is the most potent drug of all, and I offer this to any of the council members who wants to see it. It's a scientific study done on what money does to your brain. Money, the drug of choice of our great capitalist system. It does the same thing to your brain as cocaine does. This aired on national television years ago, one time. They took it off. It took me a long time to find it. I finally got it. I paid about 40 bucks for it. I Googled it recently. They want a couple of hundred bucks for this. They want a couple of hundred bucks for this. But if any of yous want it, here it is, the drug of choice for the great society of capitalism, money. And that's what's behind everything, and marijuana is no different. Not for anything I'm going to... I was in a, I guess you could say, an elite unit of the United States Army in a parachute company. And when I was in that company, we smoked marijuana just about every day, and it never impeded us. And you don't change smoke marijuana. If it's good stuff, you take a poke. That's all you need. That's all you need. It makes you nonviolent, but when you mix it in with alcohol and everything else, everything gets all screwed up. But if you just leave marijuana alone, it comes from nature, and it provides a conscious experience that is not criminal. It's not degrading. It's about time that we took it out of the criminal limelight, and like everything else, make it part of an enterprise to tax it and to take it, take people away from the punishments that are associated with this. And I'm going to leave you with the seven articles.
30 seconds.
Scientific proof marijuana is not a drug. And you could use your own scrutiny. And if anyone's interested, I'll leave it. If not, I'm taking it with me. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council President. Thanks for your help earlier today again. Hello, council. My name is Hugh Giordano. I am from Gloucester Township. I'm a union representative for the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, Local 152. Our union has approximately 1.2 million members across the United States, Canada, and Puerto Rico, represent people in retail, warehouse, factories, healthcare, and we represent cannabis workers across the country, both in the medical and the adult use. And I'm here today to speak against this ordinance because it sends the wrong message to the people of Precipity and to the state of New Jersey. I'm here to talk about a few things. First off, it is slated that, as of right now, cannabis is worth $9 billion, and by 2025, cannabis will be worth $24 billion. And this is from Forbes Magazine. This is the current estimates based on the states that have legalized it on the adult use or medical use. It is also slated that by 2020, cannabis will create 300,000 jobs. That's more than manufacturing, more than public utilities, and more than government. So it's a job creator. It's also a living wage creator. Everybody calls for the $15 minimum wage. The cannabis industry creates real hard work and good jobs. I'll give you an example. In Minnesota, UFCW represents a medical cannabis dispensary out there. The custodian made $18 an hour, full healthcare and pension. The lab techs, the vet, and the other techs made $22 an hour, full benefits and pension. And the cultivators made $2,200 a week, full benefits and pension with union security. This is a job creator. Also, I was looking a little over your ordinance here, and I Googled the organization because I like to do that. I found a Forbes article. I love Forbes. I got to tell you, I really do love Forbes. Forbes, I found this organization that you have on here, Rocky Mountain High Density Drug Trafficking Area. Forbes had an article titled "Supposedly Neutral Federal Report Stacks the Deck Against Marijuana Legalization." Forbes shows that this resolution is bogus and needs to be revised. A lot of the stats in here are wrong, and they have been found out. So this resolution should not be passed based on that off of false information. It's a bad resolution. Just on some other information, it is also, right now, in the cannabis industry, 36% of the cannabis industry is ran by females, with 63% of them having high executive-level positions. Compare that to the average business model today. Only 5% of women are in executive-level positions, and 25% are at executive, non-CEO levels. So cannabis is a creator for women to have potential So cannabis is a creator for women to have potential to grow and to have their own businesses outside the dispensary world. Also, comparing cannabis to opioids is a problem because it's comparing apples and oranges, like this resolution again does. I'll give you an example. Launa, which is the laborers' union, and IBEW Electrical Workers' Union, has just announced that they will now allow their membership to use their health and welfare fund to go on medical cannabis compared to opioids, because a lot of their members, which our members do too, when they go to the doctors getting the opioids, they get addicted, and affects them and affects their family. So if big labor unions are telling you that they want cannabis introduced, then that's something to really think about. Also, Garden State Dispensary is gonna, is the first unionized dispensary in New Jersey, in Woodbridge. The one thing to recognize too is the dispensary workers are well-trained and good people. I'll give you an example, in California, the UFCW started an apprenticeship program with the state. So it's a state-run apprenticeship program with our union and the state, and these workers go through an apprenticeship program, so they come out well-trained, they know what to do, just like we do with Teamsters. Teamsters deliver alcohol every single day. They deliver beer, wine, and vodka. Do we see people, do we see Teamsters handing out beer and vodka? No, we don't. Why? Because they're well-trained, they're tradesmen, they're drivers, and they get a good wage and benefit. Also, a lot of the security that works in the dispensaries, I would say most of them are retired police officers. So this allows police officers who were once union members to have a good job with good wages, even if they retire. It is really a huge mistake to pass this resolution, and I'm asking the council and Council President to please do not vote on this resolution, to vote it down, and to wait until the law, first off, there's no rec, there is no rec right now, there is no adult-use cannabis. The bill hasn't been passed yet. So this is, you're passing a bill for nothing, it doesn't even do anything, this resolution. You're saying, a message for what?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. Also, the DA program dropped marijuana from their list of drugs, just so you know, you on the website and look at it, it's no longer on that. UFCW stands with cannabis workers, UFCW stands behind this, and by voting on this resolution, you're telling labor that you are against good work, good jobs, and you're also telling patients that they're not worthy of their medicine. So please, vote down this resolution. Thank you.
Hi. Barbara Seaman, 360 Walthy Road.
Barbara, if you could just speak into the mic? Thank you.
Barbara Seaman. I don't think anybody has a problem with medical marijuana, okay? And as far as cancer patients, if they do not have the money for it, the Cancer Society will pay for it. Cancer Society pays for treatment, they pay for women's wigs. Believe me, I had cancer. They pick up a lot of bills, okay? And also, April 26th and 27th, our town is running a program with the Essex County Mental Health, and it's awareness on drugs and mental health, and how they're connected, okay? Like for depression or this or that. And I think a lot of, I signed up for it, because I think it will have a lot of answers, and I just want to make it aware to a lot of the people here. And as far as, yes, I think the closest dispensary is Moncler here. So, I mean, as far as people I know with cancer, they will get it for them, and they don't have to pay for it, and they'll get them there. The problem is, I don't think a lot of doctors can write the prescription for that. That's like more guarded, guarded than any script out there. But, and it can be used, maybe it can be used, and congratulations on your sobriety. But, I mean, a lot of people live on Suboxone, you know, and the state ain't picking up that bill. So, that's, I just want to make everybody aware of that meeting.
Thank you.
Ma'am, if you could just sign in. Thank you.
It is true, no one is here disputing the use of medical marijuana. And if it is prescribed by a doctor, I still think it should be labeled as a drug, and it's controlled as a drug. But we are talking here recreational marijuana, which opens up to the public and to all age groups, different sorts of medical, of recreational marijuana. It's not just smoking it. It's consumed with cookies, in candies, in soft drinks, and the accessibility that it would have to young people is there. I presented the statistics to this council twice now, and they are by reputable organizations. And I think that the future generations would be impacted, and as Mr. Honeack says, the money aspect of this is huge, huge. When the state can make three hundred million dollars on taxes a year alone to solve their budgetary problems, that's greed. The people who support this is big financial, people with a lot of money. And yes, it is going to be a very lucrative business at whose expense, because I don't think that you can say that it will not have an effect on the way society lives today. You cannot say that, because you, you have to admit that the statistics are not proven in your direction yet. So, I consider, the council should consider the fact, the overall fact of what it can do to society, and in the future of society. And who is this for? I mean lobbyists are paid huge money for an industry like this to push what's being spoken here today. And yet, the average person doesn't have that kind of money to do that, to do that. And there's an article in today's paper where high-powered attorneys are getting involved in this in New York City, and it's big money that pays for it. And that eventually, they'd even tell you how you'd be able to, the government can subsidize your electric bills for hot houses, and some people can't get their medical bills paid. This, this hierarchy of greed is there, and what you have to weigh is what socially, what it's going to do to generations to come.
Yeah, it's Jerry Manning, Rainbow Lakes. Up front, let me say that I'm in favor of your resolution, and I'm not in favor of recreational marijuana, okay? Now, the fellow that came up here earlier and claimed that it's a job creator, well, I have an answer to that. My president is a job creator, three hundred thousand in February. If this was such a, if this is such a great job creator, why isn't he on board for recreational marijuana? Think about that question for a while, see if he can come up with an answer. I do believe the answer is, it's a federal crime, period. Federal crime to smoke marijuana without a prescription, period. Thank you very much. Now, at the last meeting, Mr. Honeack got up and he preached about how good it is to have marijuana, thinks it's a great idea. And at the end of his little presentation, he said there is no evidence that marijuana would create any discourse, or was violence. No, everything is good. Oh, yeah? I have a question for Mr. Honeack. Had he ever heard of Charles Manson and his merry maid of mayhem? There's a classic example of what happens with a little too much marijuana. You not only get comfortable, but then you get stupid. He also mentioned that Aurora was an illegal organization without license to practice. Well, they just happen to be the premier forensic investigation corporation here in the state of New Jersey. And personally, I feel like this, if he wants to keep banging that drum with the fake news, I might contract them to look into Mr. Honeack's connection with Russian, the communist Russia. Because he does have one. Just have to listen and read what he writes. On another topic, another person. For eight years during the previous administration, Pat Patacia was beating the drum against Mayor Barbario because he wasn't available at the meetings for her to throw questions at. My question to her is tonight evening, how does she feel about her mayor, who made a statement when he was first inaugurated, that he doesn't intend to be at the meetings? How does that work? I don't know how that works. Oh, and Mr. Honeack also was a very active campaigner against the Waterview Project. It's now under construction and moving right along. And so far, they have spotted three retention ponds. Now, for those who don't understand what that is, a retention pond is on a great, put up on great construction sites to capture the water that is runoff from impervious cover. And what that does is, it returns that water to the aquifer. Now, my question to Honeack is this, does he have a retention pond on his property for the impervious cover that his home and driveway have created? I don't think so. So that's a little hypocrisy floating around there. Now, let's see that I covered all my notes. No, I think that's it. My time is up. Thank you for yours.
Pat Patacia, 182 Hawkins Avenue, Parsippany. I left a piece of paper, let me go back. First, I'd just like to mention I've done this the last couple of years. Mr. Inglisino left us last year making seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, and the attorney trust account was over 1.6 million. Now, the attorney trust account, from what I understand, is people that he hired outside that we needed help with, but some of that money could have went to his organization also, his firm. And I'm just letting people know because I've been doing it for a while. Precipiny's ordinance, the resolution regarding marijuana, it's just the use of recreational marijuana. But I ask you, if somebody wanted to set up a medical dispensary, would they be allowed to in Precipiny? This is all about recreational, nobody's really talking about the medical dispensaries. Like they said, they travel all over the place. Would that be something permissible? Maybe you should give that some thought. Mr. Manning, he's not only my mayor, he's everybody's mayor. And Mr. Barbario came to council meetings all the time, except during the primary and during elections. He never went, he never came to a meeting after that. I know that jobs are given out, and I've been on top of it. Like you said, Jerry, I'm always questioning things. But I've always said that I've gone by what the council, most of the council has said at times. But then I remember all the times that our council voted, and Mayor Barbario overturned that, he vetoed it, and did what he wanted to do. As far as Mayor Soriano, it's not really his job to be up there, this is a council meeting. I do understand that part. I mean, would I love to see him? At times, yes. I think he should make a presence. But it's not necessarily he has to be here. It's not really his meeting. And Mayor Barbario had stated that at one time also. So, Jerry, right now I'm very happy with the new regime. I don't see that they've done anything wrong, or anything improper, and that's my opinion. That's it. Thank you.
See no one else come forward?
Hi, good evening. Am I audible? Adam McGovern, 87 St. John's in Tabor. I just wanted to bring up something which I wish I didn't have to, and it's a matter that caused a lot of stir at the last Board of Ed meeting, regarding a letter from an employee of the Board of Ed who was spreading false and misinformed views, claiming that the current mayor had declared Parsippany a sanctuary city. I believe that what she had in mind was what we call a 287G, which is agreement between the federal government and local law enforcement to act as immigration officers, something which is not required, and in fact, which the Supreme Court, by the Tenth Amendment, has ruled several times, is something that local jurisdictions can't be compelled to do. Two of the council members reprinted this letter, and other of what I consider misinformation on their public site, and I just thought that, you know, this is a diverse town, we can do without dividing it and causing alarm for residents when it's not necessary, and causing worry among our, you know, vast immigrant population, that, you know, strong-arm tactics like we've seen escalate in the last year are going to, are going to come to this town. I think that, you know, the police do a good job doing what is their job, and they should stick to that, and we shouldn't have immense funds funnel towards, you know, making us, you know, making our town immigration officials, you know, our law enforcement's immigration officials, when hysteria is being stirred up about a problem which does not exist. What is very real is the climate of intimidation that can exist for many people in this town. And so, you know, I hope that the air can be cleared and a more intelligent discussion can, and a more humane, a more intelligent discussion can occur, and a more humane policy can remain in effect. Because obviously, you know, no violent criminals are either going free in this town or, you know, being welcomed in, as the letter writer said, and as the two council members promulgated. It's, I think it just whips up fear, and we have enough real problems to deal with, including understanding all of our communities better, and continuing to be the harmonious and well-working town that we are. Just briefly, I'd also like to say that I tune against the marijuana resolution. I think it's superfluous for something that I consider to be a very innocuous substance, and which has a lot of medical benefits, as we've heard. And I think that that's the, the momentum of history is with marijuana being decriminalized and legalized. I've never done it, or any other drug, including alcohol, including opioids myself, but I don't think it's a gateway drug. That's nonsense. It's, you know, very innocuous, and, you know, more innocuous than alcohol, I think. Okay, my time's coming up. So I just think that, you know, that also is a problem. This resolution is a solution to a nonexistent problem.
Hi, Council. Good morning. Sorry, good afternoon, good evening, whatever. It's snowing, it's fine. I'm Karan Malhotra, I live at Tabor Road, and I'm here to address something that's finally come to my attention. I've been here a resident for about sixteen years. I've seen high school here, I've been through college here, I've been through law school here, and now it's come to my attention that our community isn't our community anymore. I don't know what's spreading this, that it's our home, their home, whatever. I'm one of these so-called people that people have said look like terrorists, that are up and down Lake Parsippany. I walk there a lot. A lot of my friends walk there a lot. We're not here to harm anyone, we've been here for as long as most people have been. I don't like these things around my neighborhood, I don't like these things around my community that is making my cousins afraid to be here. Last year, I was walking around Lake Parsippany, and I saw police lights. And me- And me being an attorney, I got this. Mayor Barbario pulled me over and just talked to me like a normal citizen. I was, "Hey, how you doing?" That's what he said. I'm not here to sit here and say anyone is right, anyone is wrong. All I'm here to say is, this is everyone's community. It doesn't have to be anyone specifically's. And what I have to say is, everyone is home here. That's what Parsippany has been for so many years. And I don't think that the council should sit blindly while these kind of posts are coming out of some kind of regulatory body. I don't like it and I don't think a lot of people in town do. And I don't care who you support. This is home for a lot of people. It's America. It's supposed to be the country of the great, the brave. And to sit here and nitpick color of skin, we're not going backwards. We're supposed to move forward. I don't like this idea of nitpicking us on ethnicity. None of us are actually from here. So, it doesn't make a difference because we're here now. And honestly, I just petition the council to do something. Stop this us versus them mentality. We're a town first, a country second. This is our town, this is our home. And I petition the council to step up, do something, say something. Because this is our home. We have to live it together. I don't care if you're Republican, I don't care if you're Democrat. You're human first. So, please be human first. Thank you.
Can you just confirm that the site the gentleman referred to is not from the town where the posts, can you clarify, sir, where?
Karan, can you clarify where you've seen the sites, the postings that you're referring to?
Because you said something like posting on behalf of the town and I just want to clarify that that's not the case.
They're off of the Board of Ed-related individuals. And I'm just afraid that our Board of Ed is kind of becoming tainted toward it. I just don't want to see this kind of, I've been coming to council meetings for about a few years now. I know a few individuals here and I just, I just want to call this place home.
And I know that, and I appreciate what you're saying and I hear you. I just want to confirm that you didn't see it on the township website or any of its entities.
I haven't.
Okay. That's important for the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just state your name and address.
Doesn't matter.
Stacy Gregg. And I have, I need a point of clarification. Am I allowed to speak even though I am not currently living in Parsippany?
Yes.
Thank you. I grew up in Parsippany. Around age eight, I believe, I moved over to the Garden Apartments. So, I do have experience with being a citizen of your wonderful town. I went to the school system here. I do want to make it known to this council that upon my waiting for you to come out of closed session, I was approached by a Board of Ed member who I had had words with after the Board of Ed council meeting or board meeting last week. And he proceeded to let me know that, you know, make it a point that I wasn't from this town, as if I was not welcome. And I informed him that, you know, a couple of people informed me that that was not, in fact, the law. And he doesn't know the law, which is why I'm here. I'm very concerned about your Board of Ed. The only reason I came back to Parsippany to go to a Board of Ed meeting was because of a letter that was written, which if somebody has it, have you, has anyone on the council, I'm sorry, I'm not allowed to ask you questions. But I would really like if anyone has a letter or has it in their possession that they would hand it to me and I could read it into the official records as to what was published because I know that the last speaker spoke and you're a little confused as to why those things are being said by the last couple of speakers. But there was a letter that was written by a wife of one of the Board of Ed's members, a member that's on the board. After the meeting, it was, many, many people got up and, I used to work for a Fortune 500 company and quality assurance is one of the things I did with customer service and I would listen to phone call conversations and I would have to make recommendations for people to either get corrective action or maybe talk to personnel and maybe it was time to go. And I want to say that this Board of Ed member, after listening to many concerned citizens, the whole Board of Ed listened and they were appropriate in their responses, but even after, at the meeting, he still believed the things that his wife had written in this letter and had cause for concern. And when it was brought up about the Southern Poverty Law Center, he just approached, when he approached me and I said, "I really hope you're signed up," because that was one of the recommendations by two to three, I think four people that got up and spoke, is that the entire Board of Ed and the administrators take some courses on tolerance and understanding of racial relations and the hate groups because they, the Southern Poverty Law Center covers the hate groups that are in the United States right now. And the letter was pushing beliefs along the lines of G-287, which is a very controversial proposition. And in fact, in Morris County, I myself, as a member of the National Organization of Women, we had a counter protest to the head of the Ku Klux Klan at the time, when he came into the town of Maristown to promote G-287. The outcome of that was, we don't have G-287 in our county because we stood up to hate and it is not the job of our local police. It makes us all less safe when we have something such as a G-287, which is a racist type of proposition going in. It makes us less safe because immigrants and people that are fearful are now afraid when they're getting attacked to go to their police. Or if they see somebody else and they want to bear witness, they're afraid to go to the police because they're afraid that they're at risk and at harm. So, I'm very concerned that a Board of Ed member, someone serving on that, Ed does not understand and said to me coming in that I didn't belong because I wasn't from the town to speak and then also portrayed the fact that he would never, why would he ever take a Southern, why would he ever take one of their courses, as if it was a bad thing? So, I think there's a deep level of misunderstanding and education that needs to be done. And I don't think there's enough time for reeducation. So, I'm going to suggest that it gets looked into by whoever gets, looks into these things and makes recommendations to the Board of Ed to have another member take over. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Tim Berrios, 24 Farmstead Drive. And under full disclosure, I am an officially elected Board of Education member. I am not here representing the Board, nor am I here representing the district. I am here as a taxpayer and a citizen of the Parsippany Troy Hills. My first statement is, I also would like to suggest or ask that the resolution be passed about recreational marijuana. Being a child of the late 60s and 70s, I'm sure I'm not as educated as some, but I'll tell you right now, as a father of three children, I totally support that. I do not want to see any of our children in this town or even in this country go through anything. If it's medical use for someone suffering with cancer, as many of my relatives have gone through, absolutely I don't want to see suffering. My recreational, no. And if that makes me less informed than anybody else, I plead guilty. I am also not a racist. I live here in Parsippany. I've been here since 1990. And as much as I agree that in this township, we should all live in harmony and I live on the side of town that's very diverse and since I've been in Parsippany, since I got married in 1990, yeah, it has been a beautiful rainbow. I mean, we've had our problems, but, you know, we get through it. But the one thing that hasn't changed in all the years that I've lived here, at least not that I'm aware of, now, it may have changed and I might have forgotten it, is that you still have a First Amendment right to speak your opinion. And just because you don't like the opinion, doesn't make that person a racist. I think we use this term racist as a sledgehammer when you're losing.